Good evening, welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for June 2nd, 2015. We do have all seven members of the commission present tonight. Commissioner Pack will be stepping in here just momentarily. Jumping into our agenda, we do have one item on our consent calendar which is the minutes from our May 19th, 2015 meeting. Here's a motion on that if any of you would... Holy cow, it might not work this way. Commissioner Quinney?
Hi, this is getting a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Quinney, second by Commissioner Skoski, any special motion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We do have five public hearing items tonight. Beginning with the first on our agenda is the West Jordan City 2040 Transportation Master Plan update. And I'll turn it over to Bill Manowski.
Thank you. I'm here to introduce our consultants. We've been working on a transportation master plan update for the past year and a half. And it's finally come to near the completion. And that's the review from Planning Commission and finally reviewed by the city council. Tonight I've got two of our consultants who worked on the project. Steven Lord with ForEx Engineering. And for the tag team, we've got also Joe Perrin with Atrans Engineering. And they're gonna explain what's in the master plan and how we're gonna use it for our future planning. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Commissioners, it's good to be with you tonight. Thanks for taking some time to review this with us. I'm gonna see if this guy is working here. If it is, we'll use it. If not, then I'm gonna ask Bill to be my index finger. Is somebody over there? It may not be. It usually helps when you turn these on. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll start again. We're gonna just show you kind of some brief highlights for the whole master plan. It's a pretty big document, if you've had a chance to look at it, so I don't wanna bore you too much with the details. But I'll give you an overview of the process and what we've done. And then we'll answer any questions that you may have. So this is just an outline of the things we'll talk about, and I'm just gonna go through each one of these. This is basically the first step of the whole process, and that is to establish a baseline of what traffic looks like in the city today. So every little black dot you see on there is a place in the city where we went out and took and collected data, either in the form of turning movement counts at intersections or data traffic counts on roadway segments. And what that allowed us to do then was to get an idea of where there might be existing deficiencies on the road network and provide a baseline for the travel demand modeling that needed to be done to project things into the future. This is your existing roadway network. The different colors you see there are the different functional classifications of the roads. This is important because this allows us to see what the capacity of the roadways are. The transportation master plan relies heavily on roadway capacity and roadway volume. And obviously, if we're over capacity, we need to do something to try to mitigate some problems there. So what you see up there is different jurisdictions and different roadway types. City streets, collector streets, arterial streets, and then the UDOT roads. We've classified them by lane type rather than technically by functional class. And again, the reason for that is capacity is the most important thing that we have here. It doesn't matter what you call the road, whether you call it a collector or an arterial, so much as how many lanes does it have. So that's why you see the lane designations there. This is just a representation of what level of service is. Now, level of service is basically our metric for determining how a road is performing. The standard, the industry standard is to use a letter grade, A through F. The way I like to describe this is, I have kids, I'm sure you have kids. If your kid comes home with a D, you get really upset. If your road comes home with a D, you do cartwheels and say, "This is great." So just remember that, that ideally, we'd all like to see level of service A. We'd all like to get where we're going without any delay at all. But what that really represents is a misallocation of funds. It often means that we've overbuilt our roads and we've spent too much money. So level of service D is the standard that we're looking for. With that said, this is the existing level of service. Green being acceptable, level of service C or better. Yellow being level of service D. We identified the yellow simply to say, "These are roads that we probably wanna take a closer look at." And then the red roads you see are unacceptable, level of service E or worse. F being essentially as bad as it gets. The dots you see are intersections. I wanna point out just a couple of things. When you look at Redwood Road, you can see that Redwood Road we're showing is green. Now, if you drive Redwood Road in peak hours, it doesn't feel green, right? And that's an important distinction to make. That the problem on Redwood Road is not necessarily that you don't have enough lanes. It's all about intersections and signals. The reason we differentiate between the two is the fix for an intersection problem is different to the fix for a roadway segment problem. If you've got congestion just in the intersection, adding lanes on your main line is not gonna fix it. And that would represent a waste of money. So that's why we separate those two. And it's always a challenge to try to explain to the public why the road looks green when it doesn't feel that way. And that's simply because of intersections. So this is our baseline, this is where we started from. Jumping into the future now, 2040 was the design year for this project, for the master plan. 2040 is in line with regional planning efforts from the state, from West Front Regional Council. That's the reason we used 2040. It gives us a far enough look to make sure that we're building a good street network. And it doesn't go so far out there that any planning efforts we do would likely be inaccurate. So that's the reason for 2040. So this is really a snapshot of what the street network is gonna look like in 2040, provided the plan gets adopted and then everything in the plan gets constructed. This map here is essentially the same thing. All we've done is removed the existing roads, and this shows you just the projects that would need to be built. The blue projects are city streets, the yellow projects are UDOT roads. And the dashed lines represent brand-new facilities, the solid lines represent widens. And when we say widening, we don't necessarily mean the purchase of right-of-way. What we mean is a capacity improvement, which is usually the addition of a lane. But sometimes there are roads that are already wide enough to do that and all it is is restriping. So when you see these widening projects, don't automatically assume that we're purchasing houses on both sides of the roads or businesses. A lot of these may be able to be done with striping. So, and in the document, we outline which ones are just striping and which need right-of-way. This is essentially the same thing, but this is now just the intersections. We have roundabouts specifically identified. We're really smart, so the circles are roundabouts. And the squares represent just other intersection improvements. That doesn't necessarily mean that the squares won't be roundabouts. We just, for this level of planning, we know there are some areas that we think roundabouts would fit right now. And then everywhere else, they probably should be looked at, and everything would be done on a case-by-case basis. This then represents your future level of service. So this is what we're aiming for if everything gets built. This is what things will look like in 2040. Now, immediately, the two big red lines stand out, don't they? And you think, "Well, why aren't we fixing all of the problems?" Well, there's a couple of reasons. The first is, at this point, to widen Redwood Road and to widen 90th South, in discussion with staff and kind of our opinion is, those projects are so impactful that it may be a better idea to try to look for some alternatives. And some other things, maybe some travel demand management and some other practices. But what we didn't wanna do was say, "In 2040, you're gonna need to widen Redwood Road and 90th South." So we've left them red, knowing that in five years' time, 10 years' time, we can look at this again, see if anything's changed, and not have to recommend these massively impactful projects. So if we're right, which we think we are, then something will need to be done on those roadways. But I don't think any of us are comfortable saying, "Let's build nine lanes down Redwood Road," or nine lanes on 90th South. So we're gonna look for some other options there. These are just some other elements that are included in the master plan. The biggest piece is everything I've just showed you, what that roadway network is gonna look like and the projects that need to be built. These are some other things that we've included. Traffic impact studies, how do we make developers accountable for the impacts that they're doing on their road? And how do we assess what the impact of development is gonna be on the system? ITS, intelligent transportation systems, that's allowing our signals to talk to each other. Soon, in the not-too-distant future, allowing our signals to talk to connected vehicles, those things are coming. And we have sections on that. Traffic signal coordination, access management, coordination with UDOT. All of these things have their own section. And there's some recommendations on best practices that the city can do to just basically make the road network work better than if we weren't to do these things. One thing we have done is solicited public comment. We did this for a while, I believe. The public comment period was open for about a month. We held two open houses, one at City Hall and then one at the Bingham Creek Library on two separate nights. We had 21 people attend those. And then online, we had a comment form that the city prepared and was on the website for a while. And we got 21 responses from those. So we've compiled those comments and looked for areas that we can address those specifically. Those categories that you see up there, we broke it down into specific categories of comments. And all of these public comments will become part of the document in the appendix. And you can look through, the city has a copy of all of those. So if you wanted to look through those, then you're actually welcome to and probably should do that. And with that, that's it. That's the master plan in a nutshell. It was kind of coconut, not a walnut, but it's in a nutshell nonetheless. So we'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. Let's move just to comment, but I really appreciate presentations like this because when you're talking to the public, sometimes they wonder, "Is there really a plan? You know, why is this going on? Why is this road torn up? Why can't we coordinate anything?" And it's just wonderful to see presentations like this so that we can tell people, "Hey, there really is a plan." You know, there's a method behind the madness, so to speak. And really, things are getting done in the most cost-effective manner possible to make citizens' lives better as opposed to just getting them upset because there's a bunch of yellow or orange cones the next morning that they didn't know about. So this was great for me. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I do. So, 'cause I'm new, and I didn't get to read the entire transportation plan. Redwood Road, is it a UDOT road?
Redwood Road, let's go back to that slide and you can see. It's, so we're right here, so that all the roads with the dashed black lines, those are the UDOT roads.
Okay.
So the black dashed line there on Redwood.
So the two worst roads that we're gonna face in 2040 belong to the state.
Another reason why we're not planning to do anything.
That's probably a good idea.
You will notice that we have recommended some things on UDOT roads. The plan that we've come up with is a comprehensive plan that if a UDOT road is deficient and we feel like it's a good idea to do something, then we have put that in the plan. And the reason for that is, if UDOT doesn't say, if UDOT doesn't wanna deal with it, then the city needs something to go to UDOT with and say, "Look, we think this is gonna be a problem. You need to make this a priority." So that's, there are some in there, but I don't think you wanna go to UDOT and say, "Hey, we wanna make Redwood Road nine lanes." So that's why we didn't put that in.
Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. One quick question. If you could put forward a couple of slides to the, what it's gonna look like when we're all happy and free-flowing and going through.
Okay.
Does this reflect, and I can't really tell on this map, and I don't remember seeing it in the, on the PDF that I looked at, the intersection of New Bingham Highway and 7800 South and 40th West, that whole airport road, New Bingham Highway.
So we are...
Up just a little, there you go.
Oh, right, the airport's right here, that's right.
Yep.
The A there.
Southern Bingham Airport, I think, from what I understand, things I've seen in the past, 78th is supposed to become the main thoroughfare through there, and New Bingham Highway is supposed to be de-emphasized?
Right, so this is 78th right here.
Right.
So this is gonna be the through movement and the connection from New Bingham to 78th is gonna be a little more secure. So that's what we're talking about right now.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was reflected on that.
Yeah, that's reflected in there, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, right. Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this was not just a public hearing, so if there's anybody who would like to comment on the 2040 Transportation Master Plan update, the time is now yours. For all of our public hearings, if you would like to speak, we ask you to come to the microphone, give your name and contact information to city staff, needs to follow up with you. And you would have three minutes for your comments. Anybody like to comment on the master plan? Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to me. Please. So we'll, it's still open.
This is actually not about this project. I've been trying to get on schedule to come before you for quite some time, and I'm not able to do so. Can you give me some guidance?
I would refer you over to city staff.
I...
The Planning Commission, only here's items that are on their agenda. And so you need to get on their agenda.
How did it get on the agenda?
You submit an application to city staff, and then we will process the application, so...
Okay.
If you wanna come in tomorrow into our office, we'll be happy to walk you through the process, so...
Okay, I've done that several times, and they tell me that I'm on the schedule, and then they close up because they say we're not closing at the point.
All right, why don't you come in tomorrow and talk to me, and we'll go through this. This isn't appropriate for them to talk about that, so if you want my name's Larry Gardner, I'll be happy to help you tomorrow. Okay.
Is the public hearing closed on item three, and then reopen on the other side of the items? Is that how that works?
Yes, there's a separate public hearing for each item of the agenda.
All right, I work on it.
Excellent. All right, now we'll consider that public hearing closed and move forward from there. Commissioner Jacob?
Barring any further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion based on the presentation and the findings of the staff report that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed West Jordan City 2040 Transportation Master Plan update as addressed in the report.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Jacob, seconded by Commissioner Laws. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The next item on our agenda is a conditional use permit for Golden Imperial Reception Hall, 7879 South, 1530 West, in the CCC zone. Golden Imperial is the applicant, is the applicant present? The time is now yours, sir. If you'd like to present your item for this.
Hi, my name is Jesus Pedrosa. I'm the owner of the Reception Hall. I was there two years ago. I was there for five years, doing weddings, meetings, receptions. People can bring their own food, their own alcohol, they have parties. It's for family entertainment, it's a family entertainment center. We, we, I wanna come back and do the same business in this area. Before, I just do work with Sargevilles from the police department of West Jordan to control the alcohol and the safety of the people, and everything went okay on all those years back. And it's gonna be the same thing. This is gonna be weddings, meetings, and we're just gonna charge what we're paying.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll save you some time after the public hearing if there's anything you'd like to comment on. Now, open item number three. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Rager?
So, just to orient you where this, it's, you get to the site office in the area itself. It's basically across the street behind Sizzler. There was a reception center there a few years ago. And what I wanted to stipulate is, it was approved in the SC2 zone, and then it expired. The property has been changed to the City Center Core, which requires a conditional use permit for reception centers now. If it had never elapsed, then he could've just gone forward, but since it lapsed, he re-applied, and so that's the reason. The site is set up for that use, and as you read, the staff reported meets the parking and a shared parking arrangement because the hours between the two uses are so different. Anyway, and the staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Questions, Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. I have two questions. First, how long is the conditional use permit for before it comes up for renewal?
It doesn't, it runs with the property. As long as it, it'll go forever this time, it runs with the land.
Which plays right into my second question, it's a great segue. How does this property fit into the future plans for the City Center Core? You know, in the bigger sense, the entire, the entire City Center Core is...
Yeah.
Someday, in my lifetime, I hope, can be the...
I'm sure it's part of the redevelopment, but I haven't, I've seen so many different variations of that. I couldn't even answer that intelligently. However, in the City Center Core, you know, reception centers are allowed as a conditional use. So as far as the uses go, as far as the physical building, you know, I don't know.
May I?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Under, under one of the conditions, we're talking about security for the parking lot. What's the city's interpretation of security there?
Someone from the reception center being in the parking lot has identified that being security for a reception center.
The city doesn't have a requirement that it be a licensed security guard or law enforcement officer?
No, they can provide their own security and stuff.
In the past, when we've done this kinda thing, does that security work?
Yes, it does. As long as people see there's a presence out there, you know, if something gets out of hand, they're going to call the police anyway. And so it's more or less just eyes in the parking lot, trying to control, you know, the number of, you know, control thefts in automobiles and control parking lot drinking, that type of thing, so... Not saying that it's gonna happen at this facility, but it's more or less just being eyes out there to prevent any, you know...
No requirement to be uniformed or identified or anything like that?
No, I don't, I don't think that that's necessary in this case, so...
Any other questions for staff? Uh, just meaning to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment on item number three. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to me. Officer Park?
Just to comment, I'm grateful when people wanna do business in West Jordan. Wonderful to get things developed, so I see no problem in Mr. Pedrosa's application this evening.
Commissioner Jacob? With that in mind, I will go ahead and make the motion that we approved the conditional use permit for Golden Imperial Reception Center at 7879 South, 1530 West, in the CCC zoning district, with conditions 1 through 9 as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacob, seconded by Commissioner Skoski. Any discussion to the motions? Commissioner Green?
I'm just, I'm gonna comment, although I'll probably vote for this. I'm a little bit concerned of the security issue. I'd rather see licensed security guards or law enforcement patrol in parking lots, but that's a personal preference that makes it more secure. But anyway, that was my comment.
Any further discussion?
I just, I would just like to say that I don't necessarily agree with that, the areas. There's not really been problems around Sizzler or anything, and where it's set back a little bit, where it could be potential, a little higher potential, I think, as long as someone is out there with it being in such a close proximity to the police department already, I don't think that it would be necessary to have a licensed security guard as long as someone's watching the parking lot.
Very well, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Fourth item on our agenda is the Highlands Master Plan Amendment. Gladstone Place and Orchard Heights and Maverick. 5701 West, 7800 South, incorporating two future communities, and updating one commercial area in the Highlands Master Plan. Peterson Development, Barrett Peterson is the applicant. I was looking for him, didn't see him. The time is now yours.
These projects that we're bringing before you are not a surprise. You've seen Orchard Heights before and Gladstone as well. Maverick, we're just amending the site plan within the Highlands Master Plan. In the master plan before it was a space holder, random red box representing a commercial building or a retail building. So what we are wanting to do is just amend the graphics throughout the whole master plan, which there are quite a few. There are also a couple of little updates within the master plan to include, like, the SAA that didn't exist when we first got this approved. So really, we're just doing an overhaul, trying to update everything in it to make sure it's current. So updating the 40 acres to include that piece of property into the master plan. The little sliver of Gladstone that's right west of Mountain View Corridor, and then updating the actual site plan of Maverick so it's accurate, so...
Can we guess your name, just so it's on the public record?
Oh, yes, Kalen Nichols.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I'm gonna ask one.
Commissioner Green?
Just because, the corner of, what is that, 8200 South and 6700 West? The one, the little dropout that's there on the corner? Is that, is that ever gonna be part of this plan, or is that just excluded?
That is the only parcel that may be in the future, potentially, part of the master plan. Petersons don't see any other parcel being included, but that parcel they have looked to pursue, it is owned by somebody else currently.
Okay.
So if in the future, it might come up, but...
I just think it'd make more sense if that were in the, in the whole development, but since if they don't know, I guess we're okay.
Right, and it has been on their radar to finish off that corner, but it is still currently unowned to Petersons.
Any other questions? Very well, we'll save you some time after the public hearing if there's anything you'd like to comment on. Uh, Mr. Rager, again?
Okay, I'll go through this quickly. This is the plan that exists now. You can see the changes, the addition of Maverick there on the corner, the Loop Road across from the Smiths, and then, of course, the Gladstone Development adjacent to the Mountain View Corridor, that long eight-acre sliver piece of property that has the very deep wash running through it, and then, of course, Orchard Heights that was amended in the WSPA back in, in January. Those are the three amendments to the Highlands Master Plan. I did speak to Kalen before the meeting and alerted her to the TSOD reference on page four and the associated map in the appendix, so she's aware of that and will work on amending that. Other than that, this is, I believe, with the exception of Commissioner Green, who, I think you've seen all of these projects come to amend the WSPA and then the site, excuse me, for the Maverick a few weeks ago, and so you're fairly aware of where they are. And so, staff recommends the approval or recommends that the planning commission give a positive recommendation to city council for the Highlands Master Plan amendment. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
The same for you, Commissioner Jacob.
Just one question. A couple of times on this, as things have gone from conceptual to classic, I guess I would say, for example, the progress of east and west of the elementary school on 82nd. Both are slightly different now, but I think we amended the plan as we go, is that right?
Yeah, and what I've always learned that is better practice with development plans, master development plans, is to really outline the use, what you want in the area generally. And then the site plan gets much more specific on what it actually turns out to be. I don't, I have a belief that it doesn't necessarily have to be 100% accurate, the development plan. Like the Smiths corner up here, you know, that's, from the inception of the Highlands, that's been planned as commercial. um, up here, you know, that's from the inception of the Highlands, that's been planned as commercial. Uh, you know, it turned out very different on the site plan, I think much better. But I think as long as it reflects, you know, the different types of uses, whether it be commercial office, multifamily, single family, I think that that's adequate. And then, as long as the density and the, the, the amount of uses that are allowed in each area are described in the development plan, I think that the city's protected, so.
I, I, I think you're right, my question comes to, like, for example, the Smiths Corners, a good example. Um, when that was changed and the concept was changed, it was more solidified as to what exactly it's gonna be, we did amend the development at that time, didn't we? So, as future projects come through this development, I will be amended again.
Absolutely.
I, that's what I wanna say, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I, I'm just making a comment that, uh, as, well, you know, and I'll make the motion here in a minute, but, uh, probably, but we, we are missing page two in our, uh, in the packet. It, it's, it may have, but no, no, I-
Yours is electronic.
Yours is electronic, it may not have been printed in our hard copy book, I just wanna make a note that we are, we are missing page two of the, of the packet in our hard copy packet. So, we, the, the, the stuff that, some of the findings and some of the stuff may not be on, so as we make a motion or whatever, it's not here for us to see that you might have on your high-tech iPad over there. I love technology.
Looks like we have no more questions at this time. Uh, well then, open the side to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment on the Highlands Master Plan, uh, developments. Please.
Hi, my name is Mark Soderquist, I live in the Loneville, uh, Loneview Development. I guess I have a question, I see a lot of green areas, are those grass areas or they could be natural? As currently, in the, in the area that we're currently seeing, we have a little grass where you see the little circle, um, which then the, it can then, in the new plan, it connects across the riverbed off of sixty-four and eighty-two. But I'm-
They're, they're open areas, not necessarily planted landscape, but those are, those signify open space, so.
They just signify open place, so, right now, the development hasn't been turned over to the city, is that gonna be just natural, which is right now weeds? Or is that gonna be converted to grassland, for usable?
In Loneview, it would just be open space, so, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look exactly what's-
Okay. Do I talk to you guys later about that, so I can get a better understanding? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, uh, I don't know, if you wanted to address his question regarding the open space, uh, plan?
Um, they'll be more specifically addressed, if you look up the, the specific development plan for Loneview, it will designate exactly where irrigation versus non-irrigated open spaces. Um, along the wash itself, it's gonna be typically un-irrigated, um, more- They are, they are irrigating the wash itself. Upper block.
Hey, we need to keep the discussion kind of this direction, so it stays on the record.
Well, if it, if it's currently irrigated, then I wouldn't, I would guess that it is intended to be grass, grass mowed, maintained turf or open space or active uses, but if it's not irrigated, it would probably be intended to just be more native and left with mowing as the maintenance.
Thank you. If you wanted to follow up with city staff, we could pull the individual development plan and kind of show you what's slated for those, those areas. Uh, okay, public hearing's closed, we'll bring you back to the committee. Commissioner Gray.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, the amended plan for the Highlands development that increases the, uh, project from three hundred and seventy acres to four hundred and eighteen acres and reflects all the changes, um, in the master development plan with the condition that it be modified with the TSOD issue.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Jacob, any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item number five, item number five on the agenda is the Bowler Rezone, seventy-four eighty-two south, fifty-four ninety west, rezoning four point seven-two acres from rural residential one-acre lots to agricultural one-acre lots. Bowler livestock, Randy Bowler is the applicant, is the applicant present, yes he is, uh, time is now yours, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, Randy Bowler, I reside at sixty-six sixty-three south, twenty-two hundred west, in West Jordan. As you're aware, we have an existing farm operation in this location. We were able to acquire, uh, this adjacent piece of property, uh, so that we could just have a little more area there for the farm and our animals. Our intent there is to continue forward with what we're currently doing at that location.
Any questions for your applicant? Commissioner Jacob.
Thank you, um, just so I know, it, uh, our staff report says the intention is for more intensive agricultural uses. Can you give me a, a little bit of insight as to what that is? As far as the purpose of the rezone?
Uh, we feel that our farm operation is better suited to function in an A-zone rather than an R-zone. Uh, so, a- all we're really planning to do is just continue like we're currently doing with our farm operation.
Okay, if I can follow that up then, um, as I recall, when, when the ten acres that you currently own, or that you have owned in the past, uh, was up for a rezone, the purpose was for the keeping of the pigs, if y'all remember that fun-
We remember that.
Process. Um, so I'm just wondering if that's the purpose for rezoning this, because otherwise you were fine in an RR one, a rural residential zone. Um, as far as that, so I'm just wondering if that's the purpose for this as well? And if, so then that brings up a whole, a lot of questions for staff.
That ends up being a follow-up, because that would be a conditional use permit, so it's kind of-
Right, well, that's-
Secondary to-
I guess that brings up a whole other, lot of questions that I have for staff, so. I, I was just wondering if that's the reason, I mean, will the-
That is not our intent to, to apply for conditional use for swine on this property.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, save you some time after the public hearing.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you, um, as we recall back in, somebody were here when this originally came through, uh, there was some discussion about keeping the swine on the property, I just wanted to say that, that, uh, the chairman's correct in saying that a conditional use permit is required to allow swine to be kept on the property. Uh, the difference here is we, it's, the property's currently zoned rural residential. Um, and the number of animals that are allowed in rural residential district fairly limited, uh, this is based on acreage, whereas the agricultural zone, um, allows more, it just allows a number, number of, of animals on the property. There's no, no set, um, number like there is in the rural residential district. So, when we're referring to more intensive kinds of agricultural, just allows more animals, and that's kind of the bottom line on that. The, uh, this is the subject property, the ten acres is, are those two, two pieces that are further to the north. This is the future land use map, as you can see, it's, it's a low, very low-density residential, both the A-one districts and the rural residential districts are considered very low-density residential, so it's compliant with the, with the, uh, the general plan. Um, and that's, that's, you know, that's really what the request is, um, it's basically just to allow for the agricultural kind of use and expansion.
Any questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Jacob.
Thank you. Uh, the conditional use permit for the, the swine on the other ten acres to the north, um, would not apply then to this additional four point seven-two acres.
That's correct.
So, okay. Okay, that's, that's my question for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Very well, uh, now open the side to the public, if there's anybody who would like to comment.
Yes, uh, my name is Lynn Hewer, I, uh, am an attorney at Saw Lake, represent the owner of the property a little bit to the north of the ten acres that's been referred to, actually, one lot separates that ten acres and, um, my client's property. And, uh, I too was at that hearing when it was, when this was discussed as far as the ten acres. And it's interesting to me to review the history of that. Uh, as I recall, the, the, since the master plan and the expectation was that this would move to residential, uh, the staff recommended that that be denied, I don't know what the staff has recommended with respect to these additional acres. I, uh, do know that, uh, one of the persons who opposed that rezone, uh, Brent Atkinson, uh, said in a later hearing that he never felt so essentially disenfranchised as he, as he did under these circumstances, because, uh, what was being done was at the detriment and really essentially ignoring, uh, the wishes of those property owners that surrounded it. Uh, he mentioned the fact that he, and wrote to this commission, the fact that he had an offer to buy his property from a developer, but once they found out that he was next to this farm, uh, that was, had been downzoned and pigs were allowed in that case, and so on, that, uh, they, uh, canceled that agreement, that offer. And so, I guess it's not surprising that the Bowlers now own that property, and that is the property that's a subject of this application. Uh, it's not the only property that they've purchased because of this, under these circumstances. They own properties under various shell names, whatever, throughout that fifty-four ninety. Uh, they, the rural residential is supposed to be essentially for a family operation, but they've turned it into a business that compasses the whole si- the whole street. They're, they travel with their, their feed and their stock up and down that street all the time. It essentially is not going toward the residential, it's going to just the opposite, contrary to the master plan. Uh, I think one of the reasons that was, it was decided to go ahead and allow the rezoning to agriculture is because they figured within a couple of years, it's all gonna go residential anyway. Well, actually, it's been more than a couple of years, and of course, it's not going residential, people on the west, the north, and the south, all those other places are going residential, but not here. Uh, when anyone talks to the planning commission about having some development, they say, well, you need to have some development that's gonna encompass that whole area. And of course, that's essentially up to Bowlers. Obviously, what we have is a monopolistic situation going, where they just purchase the property if people give up and realize that it's never gonna be developed, and it can't be developed in the way that it would normally be developed, and according to the master plan to be residential, and so they sell off to Bowlers. And so, the business grows, and I imagine someday, he'll go ahead and close the business and sell it and develop it, and of course, all those, uh, profits that could be realized by the owners that have the property now will be realized by Bowlers. And I just think that it should go back to the master plan, do things in accordance with the way it was, uh, planned, I think that, uh, the fact that rural residential is practically agriculture is not a good justification to say, well, okay, let's downzone and go against the master plan. Rather, it, it seems to me that this commission should, should follow what was intended in the process of re, of zoning and master plans and go toward the way it should be ordinarily developed.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this particular item? Then close the public hearing, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to address out of the citizen comments, Mr. Bowler? Please.
Thank you, just, uh, some follow-up comments. At some point in time, uh, I anticipate that, uh, the properties along fifty-four ninety west will be developed residential. I mean, that, uh, seems like it always happens over time. I don't think we ever made any representations, representations that within a two-year time period that that would happen on our property. Uh, we think that will happen sometime in the future. Um, we do own, as the Commissioners may be aware, several other properties in addition to, to these three adjacent parcels on fifty-four ninety. Uh, we've acquired those as they become available, we, of course, don't force anyone to sell when the property goes up for sale, it's open to the public, and, uh, anyone is, has the opportunity to buy it, just like we do. We like the area, uh, we've invested a lot of time and money in the area, and would just like to continue forward with that farm operation that we currently have. Until such time as, uh, economics would change, or circumstances be different to where it may be developed at that point residentially. Um, I, I think that, uh, our history there is good. Uh, we serve the, the citizens of West Jordan in a, a much far-reaching area in our farm products. Uh, I don't know that we're creating any adverse effects to the immediate neighborhood or extended neighborhood as we function there with the farm. Uh, so just wanted to make those comments, and, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Commissioner Jacob?
Sorry, one follow-up to my question from earlier, um, as I recall when we, when we discussed this previously and your conditional use permit for your swine, um, you, we mentioned in, in that time that, that, uh, that your, you mentioned, somebody mentioned that they were free-range, so to speak. They, they're not cooped up in a pan, they're, they wander, that-
That's correct.
Okay, will there be a fence then between this property and the, and the ten acres to the north, and then we keep, keep them, I mean, I imagine there's a fence now because it wasn't your property-
Yes, sir.
So, that fence will stay in place and-
Yes, sir, there is a fence there that will remain.
Thank you, that's exactly, that's my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for him.
Commissioner Soski.
Um, when, uh, when all of this residential lips to the east of your property, uh, developed out, I'm assuming that you were already there, is that correct?
Uh, I'd have to look at the timeframe, we've been there for some time. Um, yes, I think there has been some of that residential development since we've been on fifty-four ninety.
Can you tell me, uh, when you occupied that property, like, when you started your farm operation? Twelve years?
Twelve years.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, that brings it back to us. Any further discussion on this item?
Is, is there a, is there an ability that we can see the, the land, the, the future land map? Was, or is that the one that you had up? Is, is that the future land map right there?
This is it.
Yeah. Just leave that for a second. So, the, can I ask what, the, the, the pro, the, the, the- Immediately to the right on the, on the map, uh, about where the word site is, is that RR one D or A-one there?
That's RR one D.
Okay.
Commissioner Soski?
Um, do we know when, uh, the, the owner that, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the name, uh, when, uh, when-
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. The, the owner to the north, do we know when they purchased the property?
Do you like it or dislike it?
Is that, okay, is that-
We're no longer in a public comment period, so we need to focus, suspend the rules.
Do we, I just wondered if we know when that property was purchased, or if there's a way across the town?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Okay.
Are you interested enough that you should vote to suspend the rules?
I would vote to suspend the rules.
We'll see.
Uh, all in favor of suspending the rules to allow additional public comment?
Aye.
Aye. Not really opposed. Sir, if you would mind coming up and giving us a little bit more, uh, history on that?
Yes, my recollection is that it's about ten years ago. I am, I was frankly surprised that, uh, the Bollers said they owned that other ten acres before then. Of course, they'd had, obviously didn't own the five acres that's subject to this property at that time. Because when my client moved in, there wasn't any of that farm development. It was like all the rest, maybe a few horses here and there. But it was not developed as a farm until, uh, here, uh, more than one year after. I don't exactly how many years.
Thank you.
So the public comment period has been reopened. Uh, I'll give everybody one more opportunity if they'd like to, to speak on this item. Close the second iteration of the public comment period. Commissioner Pack.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's interesting, this comes full circle. I, I believe as Commissioner Sockowski asked, I, I think I had that same question when we first heard, uh, an application, uh, for, for the Bollers farm. And I think we suspended the rules because, because that was my argument too, you know, when the who came first. It seems like that continual conundrum of landowners' privilege versus the impact on the surrounding neighbors. And, uh, have you had just a comment that, uh, I, I've known that with a serious consideration before as well?
I, I, uh, totally agree. And the reason that I agree is that, that I, I totally understand someone buying property and settling on it to, uh, potentially speculate on, on whether or not that will develop out later or perhaps they move out because they don't wanna maintain that much land or whatever the reasons are. But, but in this case, my opinion is, uh, Mr. Bollers has been there and established for quite some time. And this is, he's, he's been operating, whether it's been ten years or five years or what have you, he's been operating his business on this property for a long time. And any development that would come in around it at this point, um, as we've already heard, uh, Mr. Bollers has no intention in the near future to suspend his business. So, even if he were to, if we were to not allow this change at this point, he's going to continue to do that work which, which, uh, makes the point that, um, when made, I think kind of null and void in that, um, developers are still not going to look, necessarily purchase the land i- on either side of the property because of the existing farm. So, um, I don't see Mr. Bollers' operation as negative to West Jordan and I don't see it as negative to the existing site. Uh, so, I just like to throw that out there.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
From my perspective, having been involved in some, uh, some very high, high-density projects, uh, I'm always willing to keep, uh, property low-density and keep it back to the way, the, the way things were. A- and the longer that they can be preserved, the, you know, with open space and, and the agricultural uses, I, I ha- I'm, I have to say, the longer that we can stretch that out in this valley, I think the better off we are.
I would have to say I kind of agree with what both of you have said. And barring any further discussion, I'll make a motion. Here we are. And I move the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council to rezon the property generally located at seventy-four eighty-two south, fifty-four ninety west, from rural residential one acre lot to agricultural one acre lot zoning designation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lawson, second by Commissioner Sockowski. Any discussion to the motion? Mr. Jacob.
Just one thing that we haven't discussed yet that I was wondering if it would come up, but the motion got made before it came up. Um, and that is one, one thing that was, had been brought up in the past when we discussed the previous, the, the other ten acres. And it did, I think the same discussion applies here. And that's the first, um, paragraph under criteria one in the discussion in our packet versus agricultural zones should be established in agricultural areas, meaning protection from encroachment of urban development until such time as residential, commercial, or industrial uses in such areas become necessary and desirable. Um, necessary and desirable, I guess, are the two kind of words that you can play with there as to if that's, if that's the situation here. I'm not saying that, uh, I oppose the motion. My discussion is, is purely, I just wanted that point brought up. Are we getting to that point with the development of the Highlands immediately across fifty-six hundred west and the neighborhood and that R one ten zoning district immediately across fifty-six hundred west as well? Are we getting to the point where this, uh, urban development is becoming necessary and desirable? That's, I'm just throwing that out there for a thought and, uh, leaving it at that.
Well, let me ask you a question on your thought. Who makes the determination if it's necessary or desirable?
That's, those are the opinional, the opinionable buzzwords in that.
Because actually, the, the city or anyone else in the area could certainly think it's necessary or desirable, but the property owner may not, that might be right. Which ceases anything further.
Well, there's still a substantial amount of available property out to the west. And in that, in that case, I would say that no, it is not necessarily necessary because there's so much operating we could want to buy.
And I would, I would almost suggest that, that, that based on the terminology there, that, uh, necessary and desirable is almost a market-driven factor. And that it'll be the market that determines when it's necessary and desirable. And, and that may be some point in time when we get the transportation plan twenty forty going. Yeah, I, I think that's probably a commercial, I, I think that's just based on market, market-driven factors.
Mr. Hire.
Market-driven factors, uh, are sometimes individual. Say the, the gentleman that, uh, speaking against it, it may be a, a factor for him right now to develop that. And would that be possible by, uh, by rezoning this? Going backwards as, as he so eloquently said before in our, our pre-meeting. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking from the other property owner's standpoint, uh, those two words reasonable and...
Necessary and desirable.
Necessary and desirable might not be necessary or desirable to one person, but another person it, it is. So how do we make that determination? And by voting this in, what does that do to an adjacent landowner who wants to do something different? Just playing devil's advocate.
I think that by, uh, the statement already made where he had said that developers had approached the property owner already, but then once they found out that there was a farming operation adjacent, which, uh, as I'd say, stated before, uh, Mr. Bollers has no intention of closing that up anytime soon, uh, the, the property developers pulled out on that notion. So, I, I would state that even if, even if we did complete this rezone, the developers still not willing to have any interest in that property at this time.
What, uh, I guess the question I have is, is the property to the west, the R one ten D, is that's currently developed, right?
It's under construction.
Under construction. And it's right about it up against that too, so that...
Across our table street. Yeah, that's fifty-six hundred that runs right there.
Oh, yeah, okay. I don't understand that move.
Well, even if we don't rezon it, it's still gonna allow for agricultural use. It's just not as many, not as many chickens or...
Just a lot of cattle.
Whatever we're putting on there.
Right.
Right.
Good.
Different places. To summarize the discussion that I started then, before you pitch out. Um, I, I will go ahead and speak in favor of the motion mainly to the point that Commissioner Sockowski said that the farm's not going away one way or the other. So looking at this specific parcel, this specific motion, and this specific application, I think it fits. In a broader sense, I'm not sure it fits, but in this specific sense, it fits.
But from, from my perspective, if we're, we're, we're finding facts and we, we go based on the proponents and the evidence, I, I don't see anything that tips the, tips the scale to vote negative against this particular decision. And so I'll stick that for the record that part of the reason that I will vote in favor is there's not enough evidence to, to find anything but this. Not enough to tip the scale that way.
That being said, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to the last public hearing, which is, uh, Reagan Outdoor Digital Billboard Sign-Based Conversion, forty-three seventy-five west New Bingham Highway. Conditional use permit to convert the west face of an existing billboard to a digital face billboard in an M-one zone. Uh, ROA General Reagan Outdoor is the applicant, is the applicant present. The time is now yours.
Good evening, planning commission and staff. Uh, I wanna thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. My name is Casey Gray. I'm employed by Reagan Outdoor Advertising, we're a billboard design company. Address seventeen seventy-five North Warner Springs Road in Salt Lake City. And, um, our purpose here tonight is to obtain your approval for, uh, digital sign conversion on an existing structure out at forty-three seventy-five west New Bingham Highway. Um, we meet all the criteria that is in your ordinance for both conforming billboards as well as the, the side notes for the, uh, digital sign conversion. And in doing this, it doesn't change the face size, it doesn't change the height. It's literally just removing the existing face that we have on the structure and then inserting a, a digital sign face. And, um, uh, one of the important criterias I know is our distance from residential zone, which in your ordinance calls for at least three hundred feet. And I believe we're raising about fifteen hundred feet or so. We're in a manufacturing area. And, um, under the other conditions of the ordinance as far as the digital part, it's, we have to change the copies no less than eight seconds. There's illumination, there's timeframes and all that that I'm sure you're aware of. So, um, before I answer any questions, I wanna personally thank Ray, who was tremendous in helping me through this. This is the first time, I think, the first digital sign in your city. And, uh, he did a beautiful presentation and was very patient with us. And, uh, I just wanted to thank him for that.
Any questions for the applicants? Great. Thank you. Ray, go.
I don't know if there's a lot to add. Uh, I guess what they're doing is, it, what, I hope they have no idea. Um, they're just converting an existing, the west face of an existing billboard to a digital display. As you recall, the, uh, requirements for this came from the council, or the planning commission last, last year and it was, uh, approved by the, the council. I think most of the requirements and regulations kind of come into effect when the thing's up and running, um, in terms of, um, regulating the, the, the twirl time, uh, the luminosity and, um, and most kinds of things that might have an impact or an adverse impact on adjoining properties. So, um, they'll need to meet all those, those requirements, uh, with the sign inserted in place. So with that, the staff's recommending approval, uh, of the request. And I can't remember if I put conditions on that. Anyone else conditioned, uh, subject to those requirements of the code?
Any questions for staff? I have one semi-related. When we updated the code for this, we didn't change the, the limitations we have on total numbers, did we, of billboards in town?
No.
Okay.
So what would, so, uh, I, I'm just curious here. I mean, this is obviously the west-facing sign so that people travel and he's, see all the, see the, the stuff. What would, I'm just thinking of the future. What would happen if the east-facing sign wanted to, they wanted to change? Any, would there be any other issues there? Just going for establishing a precedent on this particular billboard?
Well, they'd have come back into, men, the conditional use. Uh, so, it, it would have come back with this body.
Very well. Uh, open up the public hearing on this item. If there's anybody who would like to comment on, uh, the digital conversion of this billboard. Same done, uh, close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this?
I'd just like to point out that, that if the east-facing sign, if they ever did do that, the soccer complex is to the east along our airport and there's no residential up that way.
It's even further.
And no one to see it?
Yeah. Correct.
And we just turn it into a soccer scoreboard, never mind.
That might have some potential. Mr. Jacob.
Oh, got it in under the wire. I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, approve the conditional use permit for the conversion of the west side of existing billboard sign at fifty-three, excuse me, forty-three seventy-five west New Bingham Highway in the, uh, light manufacturing M-one zone to the digital display, subject to meeting all applicable requirements contained in the city legislation twelve hashtag three hashtag D.
Second. We're, we're good there. Uh, motion by Commissioner Jacob, second by Commissioner Quinn. Uh, any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The last item on our agenda is an informational item, uh, just up for discussion on the, uh, congregated living facility at the northwest corner of seventy-eight hundred south and U one eleven. Ray, you wanna introduce this one?
Yes, this item, it, it did come to you earlier. I think they, uh, what they were looking at doing is, is possibly putting in, uh, it's a congregated care facility for the elderly on the corner of U one eleven and seventy-eight hundred south as part of what we call the Ocker West Development. Uh, we're looking at, that's, it's, it's fairly large, uh, future development. It's on that north, I don't wanna say the northwest corner. Um, and so these, uh, the, I think we've got a couple of representatives that are here to talk about just kind of what the facility is, is like, looks like, just to give you a little more information than what I was presenting last time.
Okay. Uh, please. If you just could give us your, your name and contact information.
Yes, uh, my name is Cory Solom. I'm a principal architect at Think Architecture at the address fifty-one fifty-one south nine hundred east, Salt Lake City, Utah. Uh, if it's okay with you, Ray, I actually, um, have some images and some other things that would, uh, maybe help explain these facilities a little bit.
Excellent.
I, I also have to apologize for Tim's, if he couldn't be here today. He's at another planning commission meeting and he thought it'd be best for me to explain these facilities anyway, 'cause I've been the architect of record on several of these. Um, to give you a little bit of background, and I'm not sure how much Tim has explained to, um, these congregated care facilities to you. Um, the, uh, facilities are, um, a little higher-density, uh, uh, project, um, varying anywhere from, uh, um, five to four stories on typical. This would be, um, this proposed, uh, facility in this area would be the fourth project that, um, uh, that we've completed of this type. Um, to give you a little bit of background, um, right here, this is a, a project that, uh, it's just under completion right now. This is a, a Rosegate, uh, congregated care facility, um, that's, uh, just being completed on the, uh, west side of, uh, I'm sorry, the east side of I fourteen, um, by their new, uh, park corridor, uh, behind the Wadsworth, um, commercial buildings in their park areas. Um, the, uh, project, uh, this project consists of approximately two hundred and ninety-eight, uh, living units. Uh, all of them are leased to, what, fifty-five and older seniors, seniors, I'm not gonna call them senior citizens, they're not quite there yet. Um, but, uh, this facility, um, has a little, a, a lot lighter, um, impact than a traditional, um, uh, congregated care or, or assisted living facility. Um, this is, uh, um, all, uh, leased to, uh, residences that are, um, can take care of themselves. So there's no eating facilities inside of it, not a kitchen itself. They're, I'm gonna call them a, a studio or apartment type units in the project. What you're seeing here is some of the amenities that are kind of built into each of these projects with the exterior landscape elements, barbecues, outdoor spaces in between the units. Typical landscaping on this one is again showing a kind of a water wise zero escaping that you're seeing in the, in the front of this unit here. Again, just wanted to give you a little bit of, of views on this. This is, I had the opportunity to take a few interior shots, so you can kind of get a feel and flavor for the interior finishes. This is the entry lobby into the facility itself, the green space with the reception area. Each of these facilities have a lot of amenity elements that are built into them. A lot of, you can see the grand lobby areas, entertainment areas. Typically, a dining kitchen kind of built in like this. It's not a full service kitchen, meaning it's set up for snacks and, and other things, when people just wanna run down and, and meet with their friends down there. Also, inside of these are hairdressing salons, exercise facilities, game rooms, like you've seen in the slides here. This, this slide right here is at the upper level, so it's a kind of typical finishes of a hallway. So that, that kind of finishes the slides on this one. If you wouldn't mind opening up that other folder. Kind of mixed with a little song or something, but I don't sing very well, so. Yeah, that's, that one right there, Harriman Renderings, yes. If you wouldn't mind pulling up that, maybe that PDF up the top there and then those other images as well. This is again a very similar facility that I currently have under construction in Harriman right now, in the Rosegate area. Same, same program. This one's actually, I, I would consider a little upgrade from the previous draper version. You know, we're continuing to learn a lot as we develop these sub-projects on what the clients are looking for. But you can see from the facilities, even though it's a little higher, higher density, it actually has a very low impact on it. After the, being into the fourth facility here, we're finding that most of the residents are looking for a smaller unit. Typically, the apartment units, there's only two types, a one bedroom and a two bedroom unit. One bedroom unit is about eight hundred and sixty square feet and the two bedroom is about ten, one thousand and fifty square feet. Parking ratios on, on a project like this is typically one stall per unit on average because most of them are not couples that are living in the facility. Either, either they're widows, widowers, or older single individuals that are looking to get out of their homes and, and have a, a more maintenance free lifestyle. You can see a few of the upgrades that we've made in this larger one, is a larger porco share. Upgraded exterior materials, you see the exterior stone finish. This is all finished in hardy material up above it. Either a board and bat system, a flat panel, and then a lap, a lap siding. And you can see the, this presentation that was done for Harriman City. Really, the main goal, I was kind of wanted to come in and, you know, be available to let you ask us questions a little bit more about this type of facility.
Mr. Hyer?
Thank you. So are there any covered parking?
Actually, there, there's a lot of covered parking here, all done with carports. Typically, what we're doing is, is if we went back to the draper facility photos, this one rendering, you can kind of see there all in the back of the facility because we try to spray those in the back areas so that the building is. The draper facility has some on the sides of it just a little bit because it was a little smaller site, but but usually all, we try to give every car a, a covered parking stall. Or at least every residence a parking stall, not so much visitors. We might see some of those carports. You can kind of see a few of them if you look towards the left side there.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. I just missed, are these just one person living in the room or is it meant for multiple persons per unit?
Again, it's, it's not meant to exclude. There are two bedroom units. The ratio is about a sixty to forty, sixty percent one bedroom units to forty percent two bedroom units. So a husband and wife might come and stay in it. Typically, we're finding it's mostly baby boomers that have sold their homes in the retirement phases and, and they're typically a widow or a widower. And, but still very able, so it's not assisted living facility that, you know, you're not dealing with nursing or memory care or anything like that.
Right? Mr. Hyer?
So the, the, this, this property, the piece of property that this sits on, what's it currently zoned? Do we, do you know?
Sandy gravel pit.
It's zoned for, I think it's L S F, I think you're right. I think it's L S F R, which is low density, single family residential. It's a, it's a west side planning area zoning, but I think the applicants are actually looking at zoning it to a planning community.
Is this still W S P A?
Yeah, this, this piece is. See, I guess from my perspective, planning community wouldn't make sense because it's not a multi-use property, but.
I, I think their overall plan for the whole, was it hundred and seventy acres? It's, is for a plan, a mixture of congregated living, townhomes and single family, so.
Is that if we go to a planning community, you can go seventy, is it seventy feet or is it the underlying zone?
I think that's set by the planning commission and council.
Just, just from my perspective, giving you a little bit of feedback, I, I think I'd be concerned of, just, just knowing what some of my neighbors go through. I think a five story building would be a little nuts. Just some feedback. But whatever comes back, we'll take, I'll, I'll take a look at objectively, but I just think that sometimes two tall buildings are not necessarily the greatest thing on the, that, that, but it does maximize efficiency, so. Anyway, that's, that's my feedback.
It, it does allow some of the additional facilities to be built into the project. It, it, you know, of course, it brings in a little bit more economy of scale. You know, additional elevators and other things are able to be offset those additional costs, but you can understand that. That was, that was kind of a learning curve we've gone through with a couple of the other cities, but I think the facilities have been pretty well received.
Is Rosegate the one over there on, off the Bangator?
Correct.
Just east of Bangator, you go up the hill?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen that one, okay.
I might be mixing things up, but I think the last presentation for this item, there was some mention of the topography for that specific area because you're, you're coming down off the hill of the U one eleven, so it would, at least from a perception basis, not look as tall. I think that point was made previously.
Yeah.
That, that was part of the discussion we were having in our office as well about, this looks like it might be a good fit for this location because of some of those topography issues.
Any other questions, Hones?
Just one. How far will it be set back from the road? I, I remember we looked at the platform or the general, you know, idea of the plan before, but can you?
You know, it, it kind of varies again as we lay out each one of these plans. Typically, what's happening around each of these facilities, you can see from where I'm standing at. I, when I took this photo, I was quite a, a long ways still up the street. If we're looking at, we have a ten foot buffer between our building and the parking areas. Plus the parking stalls are sixty feet, that's seventy feet, plus another ten foot buffer on the other side. We'd be, you know, almost eighty feet.
Right, and that's, you know, for me, as long as it's set farther enough back from the road, that the height becomes a little less relevant because your scale kind of puts you, it doesn't look big, so.
Yeah, it, it does, definitely offset a little for that as well.
Right.
And again, how we've been trying to plan these facilities, things with the, you know, the large porco shares, the high, high use of the commercial, calling the commercial elements of the building. And like I mentioned to you before, all of those amenities, they're all centered towards the core, core. So we're kind of wanting to disguise the parking around the sides and the back of the building. That's where most of the residents park their vehicles.
If I ever find myself over fifty-five in single, heck, really nice.
Hey, you can hear that.
It's beautiful, yeah, I can hear my hair there. It's very, it's very, very nice as far as finishes and that, very high end looking and.
That, that really is one of the, the big goals that I think has been attracting the clientele. It's a, it's definitely a lifestyle building. It's, you know, we don't want to use the old connotation of apartment. These are all granite finishes. You saw the finishes that we're using in the lobbies, it's marbles and granites and, and all the corridors with the Wayne's Coke finishes and, and other things. They're quite custom.
And the other thing I wanted to say was as far as this location and this use, it's gonna depend on everything else. As far as my sense goes or feedback, like Larry mentioned, you know, the, the, the townhomes and the single family, how, how that all fits together, if it fits together, it makes sense.
Sure.
This is my neighborhood across the street, so this is a close to home.
Yeah, well, we hope you keep an open mind. I think it would be, they've been a great amenity, I think, in two different cities and, and we've been amazed actually at the demand that, that we've brought, so.
One thing that kind of strikes me about this particular location is its distance from everything else. How does that factor into your marketability?
You know, again, it's, it's not that we're marketing to a walking communities quite so much. There are, everyone that's doing amenities, like traveling to the grocery stores or other things like that, they're all done through shuttles. That are each one. This is a particular facility, if you know, it's very close to the Harmon's Center, which is off of Bangator. But we do assume that, you know, again, most of the people are still driving up until the age of seventy or so. And then from that point, a lot of them are using the, the shuttle care services. And so that's one of the biggest things that they have been doing is trying to load it up with amenities and fun things to do. So that, you know, it's, it's not a retirement for sick and, and, and ill people. It's people that want to spend their time traveling, not have to care for a house, not have to care for those kind of things and, and spend their, their resources in different places.
Mr. Hyer?
I'll go, I was just gonna ask about the price points. Yes, you know, you talked about square foot, it's one bedroom, two bedroom. What, what is a typical?
You know, typical ranges and, and of course, I'm the architect for it, I don't set and market on a lot of it. But typically, from what I've been seeing, they've been renting at about a dollar thirty-five to a dollar fifty-five a square foot.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, if you're, if you're looking at an eight hundred fifty square foot unit, you could expect a thousand dollar lease payment, which is, I think, quite affordable for, for someone in their retirement age.
All those amenities, yeah, that's great.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Anything else we, we need to discuss? You have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Anybody opposed to that? You stand adjourned until June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Someday.
You will be off later.